I believe for the discussion items, for an amendment to Article One of the zoning ordinance regarding the definition of the farmer's market and a discussion of possible code amendments. So with that, Wally, do you have any presentations that you would like to or anything that you'd like to start off the conversation with?
No real presentation from me. I think Danan's going to lead our discussion. Get over there.
Thank you.
So I can introduce this for you. This is on the table because I believe the Planning Commission mentioned wanting to take a look at the definition after the recent conditional use permit for the Pecosin Farmer's Market. So to go over what we have, the farmer's market is currently defined as a place where farmers or other people who are engaged in truck farming gather regularly for the purpose of selling produce or goods produced to farms, including the sale of seafood. Outdoor display of seasonal items as part of a farmer's market is permitted by right in our B2 district. Also, flea markets are allowed as a conditional use, but they are not defined by our current ordinance. And this arises because the conditional use permit, the Pecosin Farmer's Market, does not strictly fall under this definition. It is for more things than just produce, for home style items, for other things that are, you know, not specifically produce or farm goods. And
And not seasonal either.
Not seasonal items. So it makes it difficult to, over the long term, permit uses like this with this very restrictive definition of farmer's market. So we wanted to take a look at this definition, if it could be either relaxed or amended in some way as to better reflect what the Pecosin Farmer's Market and Farmer's Markets might look like. So that, the memo included in your packets has a number of definitions from our neighboring localities, what they define farmer's markets and flea markets as. And at the end, I have three questions for the Planning Commission for discussion. The first one would be, should the city definition of farmer's markets be made more inclusive of homemade or handicraft sales, such as those taking place at the market currently permitted on Victory Boulevard? The second question would be, should the city define flea markets as separate from farmer's markets? We do not currently define what a flea market is. But if we were to define that, how would we, how would that impact the existing Pecosin flea and farmer's market? And the third question would be, should the Pecosin Farmer's Market CUP be amended to be more inclusive of retail or handicraft uses outside the traditional scope of a farmer's market? The first condition on their existing CUP states that the use permit is for a farmer's market and nothing else. So the question is basically asking, instead of trying to define a farmer's market around what they are currently doing, instead we could amend the language of their CUP to allow more uses than that. So.
Well, the farmer's market is really a traditional thing where farmers come in and try to sell their groceries. There's no other stuff other than farm goods, correct?
Correct.
And that's the way that definition goes. I like the York County definition of a farmer's market because it does allow the other part of what they're trying to do out there, but does not infringe people putting a stand outside their store or what have you. So it really pretty well defined other than a farmer's market, a flea market. Now, my question is, you said permit. Is there a permit for a farmer's market to be held? I mean, do you charge for that?
The use permit is, it's only a zoning permit. It was needed because the Pecosin Farmer's Market are out of operating in the R and D zoning district. So since they're not at B2, they would need a conditional use permit in order to allow that use.
Okay, so the existing, the farmer's market that has been here for a while has been in that Big Woods Project, which is zoned what now?
R and D.
R and D, so it's not B2?
Correct.
Okay. So in other words, they had it in the parking lot of Farm Fresh. Oh, that one. Then that's a business area. Okay?
They would be permitted to do that by right.
Okay. So these, these markets are not in the B2, so they need a permit or a conditional use to conduct what they're doing right now.
Correct.
And we gave them that, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the question is, is do we charge for a farmer's market right now? Do we have any, is there a fee for?
If they were allowed in B2 by right, then the answer would be no. They would need no permit. They would simply need whatever business licenses are needed to operate in the city. As a conditional use permit was required, I believe there was a fee associated with that.
Yes.
Mostly just to cover the cost of advertising. It is not a recurring fee. It would just be a one-time use to cover the costs, advertising for Planning Commission and Council.
And then I, you know, from a farmer's market where you're trying to just bring stuff in versus having a bunch of tables where people are bringing goods in to sell. And, you know, usually happens is like at the Pecosin Seafood Festival, they charge per table, per 10 by 10 section. And that would be different. So that's why I like the flea market, which covers that. So if the farmer's market that is now there wants to have other vendors there, they would have to apply for, if we put a flea market thing in there, a flea market permit as well. Is that my understanding?
Basically two use. It'd be a farmer's market. I mean, that's what they aspire to be, but they're really operating very much like a flea market right now.
Right. So that if we were to have the definition of a flea market in there, and we could have a conditional use for both for them, then we have it defined and they can have that, correct?
Yes. If we were to define a flea market and perhaps amend their CUP to allow them to operate both a farmer's market or a flea market, that could be allowed.
The other thing I had was, I envisioned, at least I heard, something about food trucks. And that means prepared foods and they have to have, I remember when we did our seafood festival with Exchange Club, had to have a health permit. And I don't know if these food trucks carry their own permit, health permit, or do they have to obtain a separate one? I think we have to be careful about putting in prepared foods, something that they have to have an existing health certificate. And I don't know if that's per occasion or if it's something that they grant on a, you know, every six months or something like that. I don't know how the health certificate works. I know we have to
I'm not sure how they do that either. I know, I used to work with the Oyster Festival in Middlesex County, and I knew that the health department, every morning,
Right.
would have to come through and take a look and make sure you're
You had a cleaning station.
Right, right. I would think that they would have to do that at every event, but, but I don't know. I don't know.
The Kiwanis barbecue, you know, for example, at the seafood festival, and whenever we have them, they absolutely, yeah, have to do that by all the health regulations.
We might want to put some verbiage in about prepared food or hot food to have up to date or existing or fire certificate. But I like the idea of having York County's definition of a flea market, and if they get a conditional use for a combination of a farmer's market and another one for the flea market, then they're covered. Because, well, right at York County there, at Victory and Yorktown Road, there was always that market there, and that was almost always produce, so.
The York definition of flea market certainly covers, and Dan and I, we talked a lot about the T-Mobile place that's over there. Because, you know, they're, and that's certainly a retail sales operation. It's certainly not selling anything that's homemade, homegrown, handcrafted, old obsolete or antique. But it does include the selling of goods at retail by businesses or individuals who are generally engaged retail. So I think they would fit that. But then it goes on to say, this definition shall not be construed to include sidewalk sales by retail merchants, food, produce stands, bake sales. That could be a problem for our guys selling food. Right. We'd have to, as you said, we would have to somehow address that.
Yeah.
In our definition. Because right now, the York County, and if you look at the York County and you tried to apply, you'd probably say that they're not allowed.
Right.
Trouble right now is we've permitted a use which is operating like a flea market. But they don't want to be a flea market. They like to be a farmer's market.
Well, they can advertise anything, yeah. They can advertise anything they want. I, I understand that. But what they're doing is a mixture of both.
Right.
Look at the Smithfield Farmer's Market or the Yorktown Farmer's Market down at Riverwalk. They are operating the same as the Pecosin Farmer's Market.
Right.
So I don't know what definition either one of those jurisdictions are under because they're having the homemade, homecrafted, homemade goods along with some baked goods and some produce from vendors and honey and so forth. So it is a mixture of what those localities are doing. And I'm not sure if they're getting a permit for both, the farmer's market and flea market. I defer back to the city regarding that because y'all did the research on the various localities. But
One thing would be to put the definition in there, and the other one is to put permit requirements, you know, if you're going to, farmer's market is definitely, you know, you want that so that people can get the produce. The, the other one is more of a, usually someone's doing it to raise money or what. And that permit, yes, it could be given. It certainly have to do it where they're doing it in the, in the research zone. So maybe there's a condition we have to put in a combination of the two.
The real issue we have with the CUP that we gave is that condition one, as Danan pointed out earlier, that limits them just to a farmer's market as defined. Because they certainly presented us with enough materials about what they wanted to do that indicated other activities.
Right.
And so, you know, the Planning Commission, the City Council saw that, you know, perhaps one alternative to all of this could be that we just simply end their conditional use permit to not have that condition one. Just say, you know, it's a farmer's market. This is what the City Council or the Planning Commission recommended. The City Council approves for allowed activities. We still have the problem with the farmer's market definition. But at least we're a little bit closer to everything that they're doing being permitted.
Are you trying to eliminate activity or just make them compliant? Because, I mean, I'm not sure what the goal is here.
The goal is to make them compliant with the definition of a farmer's
Okay. Which they are currently not. But they operate under a use permit, correct?
Again, we had that condition one of the conditional use permit that limits them only to activities that's defined as part of a farmer's market. We don't have a broad enough definition. I think we could easily broaden it to include, you know, homegrown and, you know, jams and things of that nature. But the T-Mobile thing
How do you eliminate, I mean, I don't know how you differentiate specifically between a farmer's market if you're going to allow goods other than what's produced by the farmer and brought in to sell. How, where do you draw that fine line between a flea market, if you will? And, I mean, I think of a flea market as the market up on Jefferson Avenue. To me, that's a flea market. That's not a farmer's market.
Right.
Farmer's market is primarily goods and aids produced on the farm by farmers. So I don't know. I think it's a very fine line to differentiate between the two.
I agree. And I think both of those definitions, I think what we have across the street is they aspire to be a farmer's market, but they're probably more like a flea market.
Really? I've never been to it, so I can't speak to it. So.
They're a little bit of both.
A micro seafood festival.
I'm sorry?
In my opinion, it's a micro seafood festival every weekend.
Oh, really?
I think it's every other weekend. If I'm not, my wife was telling me it's every two weeks or something. Am I right?
They have little vendors that sell paste and other pre-made dishes. They have people that sell honey, people that sell jam, people sell necklaces and bracelet trinkets and other type of crafts. But then they also had some produce there from Wilson Farms County. Some seafood vendors were selling seafood wholesale. It's a mixture of both.
It's probably
But a lot less of what you imagine as a flea market about the place over
Right, right. That's my
Right.
in my mind. But I don't know how you put that on paper, differentiate.
Well, so a couple of points that I would like to make, and I'm going to piggyback on yours. So I guess before I do that, though, I just want to make a couple of points. I spoke with one of the organizers of one of the local marketplaces. She makes note not to call it a farmer's market because she did say that they have a really hard time getting produce. We have so much competition with other larger farmer's markets that she does have a hard time getting produce. There is some, but it would not be enough to constitute it, to say it's an actual farmer's market. The farmers go elsewhere. So she said, and I did ask, I said, now, do you try to limit it, limit it to homegrown and homemade, like jams, jellies or homemade crafts? And she said, you know, we really tried to do that, but things like the Pampered Chef and things like that, that's what brings in the crowds. They have following. She said, we wouldn't be able to succeed without more of those mainstream vendors. Now, that being said, with the flea market, I always think of going to the old drive-in movie theater and tube socks. That's what I always think about with a flea market. So looking at some of the other different municipalities' definitions of markets, one that I really like, at least terminology-wise, is open air market as opposed to, I think it sounds, I don't want to say classer, but I, I like the umbrella of open air market as opposed to flea market. And I think that's something that can be a little bit more encompassing than our strict produce and seafood farmer's market, but still sound good without having a lot of, you know, depending on how we want to limit it. But that can be an alternative verbiage as opposed to flea market.
Wally, is your intention, at least I heard, that maybe we take the definition of a farmer's market and modify it to include some of the aspects of the flea market? So we broaden that definition?
We could broaden that definition. I was looking at Newport News after Ms. Emmett spoke, and they call it special sales, open air market.
Like the open
I was kind of thinking about that area. Maybe, maybe that's an avenue to look at. But even here, under the Newport News, no person showed any sales, commonly known as rummy sales, food sales, bazaars or flea markets at which is offered for sale food secondhand, but first having obtained a permit therefore from the city manager, manager's designated representative. You know, maybe, we don't have to call it special sales, but maybe we call it an open air market, and maybe we do allow, you know, some limited retail sales. I mean, it was not predominantly retail sales. But, you know, we could fiddle around with that.
How long is a conditional use permit good for? I mean, let's face it, if this thing grows and grows, then you may want to either reexamine their permit or what?
If no time limit is, is given, it's actually in perpetuity, a conditional use permit is.
Right.
Now, I don't remember, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there was any time limit placed on this particular conditional use permit.
It's no explicit time limit. It's simply if the use is, goes unused for a period of two or more years, it becomes void.
Well, that's, yeah. And that's a non-conforming grandfather.
I put another pair of conditions in to address growth of the site, you know, coordination with the police department for parking, not tracking onto the road, some of the general conditions from York County that they apply
Okay.
to farmers and flea markets. But it's on a case-by-case basis right now. So if someone else wanted to apply for a similar use, they would have to go through the same process. We have to create conditions for them.
If what Angie said about open air market and incorporate both the farmer's market dialogue and a select one on the flea market, which is your, you know, retail and stuff like that?
That's what I'm thinking. After, after listening to Ms. Emmett, I'm thinking possible way to go. So that way, we don't call it a flea market. We call it an open air market. As you say, it sounds a little classy.
And, and food, food vendors, if they abide by a local and state laws or regulations or?
Would this mean taking the definition of farmer's market and turning it into the def, uh, open air market?
Yeah.
Adding to.
And not defining farmers or flea markets?
And one open air market.
A one general category.
Merging the two.
Include the elements of the farmer's market and the
Right.
flea market in there.
And then if they had to get a conditional use permit, if there are any uses that the council or planning commission recommends do not be, we can, we can set, except for Bob.
You have a back door.
It's a lot easier to do it that way.
Have you had any conversation with Gloucester? I mean, they have a big flea market there in Gloucester on 17, separate from their farmer's market, which I believe is held downtown. Have you had any conversation with them in terms of clients with one or the other or, because they seem to have a pretty set definition for, for both. And I just wondered if you
They're pretty exhaustive on both of them.
Yeah. I, I just wondered if by any chance you had any conversation with them or having been from that side of the river?
I have, I have not myself. I'm pretty familiar with Gloucester County, but I haven't had specific conversations about farmer's markets. I don't know if Danan has.
I mean, I would hate to see it turn into, yeah, I would really hate to see that like we have on, well, on 17 and on, although, I mean, I know it draws crowds and people love them. I know the one on Jefferson is, they're open, they're booming. It seems that there are a lot of people. I've never been there, but it seems to me that it's a booming thing. Are ours well attended? Is, is our farmer's market well attended?
It didn't have all the advertisement at first, but my wife has been up there twice. And it's one of those things that there's not a lot of tables to look at, so you're not sitting there loitering for a long period of time. And right now, it's at a, it's like a lot of things. When it's small and controlled, it's good. But if it gets out of hand, you could have traffic problems on one of our busiest streets coming in and out of the city.
It's not paved, right? It's not paved? So it's all
Weather dependent.
Yes. That, that was in the thing, I believe, was the weather dependent. And they have to clean up the street if something happens, I think.
Have there been any issues with it that we're aware of?
They canceled a couple because of weather.
They did?
Yeah.
I haven't received any complaints. I would imagine COVID has pretty much taken a toll on those
Yeah, you're right. You're right. I like the open air idea, I think.
And, and I do like how Gloucester has, hey, this should not be construed to be garage yard, garage yard, luggage sales.
Right. Right.
Allows us to deal with some unintended consequences, but by the
Now, how would the, the Pecosin fishing and boating flea market that's held at the high school, that is not under this umbrella, is it?
No. And I don't know how we've been doing that in the past, to be honest with you, because we don't even have a definition of flea market in our ordinance. What is the purpose of that? What does that, what is the purpose of that? Does that raise money for the schools or?
Or it's a fundraiser. It does all go back mostly to the community. Yeah, it's a charitable.
Okay, that's how they do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, for Kiwanis.
Yeah. Yeah, I think charitable organizations are generally not included as farmer's markets or flea markets. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to tie anybody's hands with that.
Right. Gotcha.
Some of these definitions have exceptions for sales conducted by religious, civic or charitable nonprofits. So we could put that language in there.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
I kind of like Gloucesters.
And that's what we're talking about, up here at the farmer's market.
They have both there. And they're both pretty large, I understand.
Were we to make this definition change, we would also need to amend their CUP to basically change it to an open air market
Yeah.
CUP.
Come up with a good definition.
And I'm, I'm thinking we'd probably do this for them free of charge. We would just, you know, change their permit to make it go through.
Well, and there's one other question, which is, in B2, the outdoor display of seasonal items as part of a farmer's market or other things is allowed by right, and flea markets are allowed as conditional uses. So what should open air markets be allowed as?
If you have it in a research area, it has to be a conditional use.
Correct.
But if it's in a business area, and that, the person that owns that business, the lot, like in this particular case, it's the Browns that own the parking lot there with Farm Fresh, I think they, they might be within their rights to hold it. I mean, we have a coffee booth during the Christmas parade handing out free coffee in the parking lot and as a fundraiser, tips only. And never have gotten a permit for that, but it's in the business area. It's in their parking lot.
Are they, and it would be allowed, are they both allowed by right currently in general commercial or in, okay, so in any
Just in B2.
Okay. So right now, it's, farmer's markets are allowed by right only in B2, and flea markets are by conditional use permit only in B2?
Right. Because we don't even, well, I don't, I don't know if we actually allow flea markets under any zoning district, but we certainly don't define them.
They're allowed conditionally, whatever they are.
And wherever, yeah.
In B2 owned.
Okay.
I think it's a, a special use permit when you understand that there's nothing else around there, that they've thought this out and presented versus just someone opening up and disturbing neighbors with everything from carousels on down. I mean, they could, they could get, so I guess that's why we're here, is to buffer and you guys the same way.
And I should mention that the permitted use that we're talking about is free, it's not, doesn't just say farmer's markets. It specifies, it specifies the outdoor display of seasonal items, which covers McDonald's Garden Center, which is not a farmer's market. It allows them as well as sales done by charity or religious organizations or as part of a farmer's market. So it's worded a little roundabout.
And we don't have a def, okay.
I, I think, is it CVS that's taken over McDonald's?
Yeah. Although McDonald's, interesting you mention that because I think McDonald's Garden Center is still going to try to locate there. They're just going to locate in a different area, take up different spaces. They're going to be more towards the front as it fronts with Creek Road. We talked to them about the need to, you know, obey setbacks. And one of the things, because they have a presence in, and that's what allows us to really do this, is that they have a presence within the shopping center. They have a little suite. But what we've told them is that the parking spaces that are being taken up for the McDonald's Garden Center may become problematic if they ever do lease the space out for the Farm Fresh, because then they'll need those parking spaces for the Farm Fresh. So we're making sure the Browns knew that beforehand, although I don't think the rental of the Farm Fresh is, is particularly imminent at this point in time. And sooner or later, it will be. So, you know, McDonald's Garden Center will have to find another place at that, presumably, you know. But that's, that's down the road. So. But they are allowed there because they're a business activity and they do have a location within, within the, the suites that are available. Otherwise, it'd be a conditional use permit also. And I think the last time they went through, they were actually turned down for a conditional use permit, which is why they came, it was a long time ago, long before me, anyway.
Oh, I was just going to say, thoughts about conditional? So if we do have open air markets, should they be required to have conditional?
Well, where they're not allowed in, like in B2, as Danan pointed out, I think probably so. Sorry about that. Probably so.
But they're only allowed by right in B2. I'm sorry, I didn't
Farmer's markets are.
Only farmers.
Yeah.
So open air would not necessarily be.
That's my interpretation of where.
We'd have to treat open air markets somehow within We'd have to treat open air markets somehow within B two and just list it as a permitted use or.
As a permitted use.
If we merge the definitions of farmer's market from wherever we decide to pick it from. If farmer's market is already permitted in B two, how are we gonna distinguish if we're just calling it?
Well, an open air market would be a different deal. So, yeah, we would just need to go under B two and then permitted uses. Where it says farmer's market, maybe we just maybe it's as simple as just taking that away farmer's market and call it an open air market. I know we'll have to look at that. We'll have to look at that.
If we are using the definition of flea market as the basis for an open air market, then basically right now in Pecosin, they are allowed as a conditional use.
In B two?
Yes.
So market is more intrusive than a farmer's market.
Oh, oh, you say flea market in B two.
Right.
To require a conditional use permit.
So, I mean, there's kind of a fifty fifty line there. Air market like farmer's market or we want to treat it like flea market.
I'd have where is B two? I I can you kind of give me an idea?
It's basically up and down with Creek Road.
B two?
It's B two. And and really with very few exceptions, that's where most of your B two.
Wally, does that B two stop there around Dr. Hunt's office where?
And it goes all the way up to Yorktown Road.
Oh, it does run all the way to Yorktown?
Yeah, just about.
There might be a few residential zones in there, but. I I think that, well, we don't have a whole lot of B one. We have some GB, general business.
So it's not allowed in that? I mean, I don't have the zone.
Now, B two is basically our think of it as our highway commercial zoning district. That's really what it is.
I'm just trying to think where where would we see that based on we don't have a zone.
Well, if you don't like these guys across the street, we'll see them buy this to use permit in areas where they have enough land to really stage one. So, you know, we may see some more condition. Or open air markets.
The Surf Stop is B two, is that?
Yeah, that's one of those rare B two areas away from from with Creek Road, yes. There's a few up out there around the Old Town Center, around Reggins Ford, you have a little bit of a commercial. B one or GB, but.
So what was that operating as a flea market under B two, under when they were having their tents and whatever they did?
We allowed them to use a tent for they were still operating as a restaurant.
Out back when they had all the tents and the the vendors?
I don't know about tents and vendors. All I know is about the tent that they had tables at and they were able to do that. We in an effort to address COVID, we allowed people to have outdoor dining. I don't I don't know about the tents that.
I thought they had some sort of event there, and I could be mistaken.
They had a marketplace.
They had some kind of marketplace around the fall, I think, one in the fall.
As a farmer's market.
As a farmer's market, that's what I thought. But I again, I'm.
If it's B two, it wouldn't have been allowed by law.
So it's allowed anyway, so I guess they didn't need a.
Right, as a farmer's market, whether they fit the definition of a farmer's market in our ordinance, it sounds like they might not have put in.
Well, I think we need if we're gonna keep this, we need to change this truck engage in truck farming. I'm not sure exactly what truck farming.
Well, it doesn't cover what you're doing across the street. I know that much.
But I do think we need to expand that. Not necessarily. I I I I'm I'm kind of thinking. Open air markets, they do need other businesses to attract enough foot traffic there to make it cost effective. Otherwise, they they couldn't do it with just, like you said, farmer's goods. They couldn't.
But it doesn't have to be a rummage sale, so we can I and again, I like the the Gloucester.
I like Gloucesters.
I like their their exception statement.
Right.
We'll come up with an open air market definition for the for next month. And we'll of course let y'all look at it and shoot at it or what. And but we can do that, Dan.
That covers it. Gives me some feedback to work with.
Be a lot less work trying to define both of them separately. I agree. That that sounds good. I'm sure you guys can come up with. They have enough guidance in those other jurisdictions.
It might be interesting to speak with Gloucester if you have an opportunity.
Okay.
Just to see because they do have such a large fleet market there as well as a farmer's market in downtown.
We can do that, yeah, not a problem.
If they've had any issues, if any issues ever.
Sure.
Uh, so we can now go ahead and move on to the discussion of possible code amendments.
Yeah.
Item two.
Yes, I there there are several things. I think this year, hopefully, we don't have another prolonged shutdown with COVID. If we could actually get some stuff done in our ordinance this year that we were not able to do last year. First thing that and this is really a city council directive, as y'all remember, I'm sure with the legacy thing. We had a hard time deciphering what was what with them, and a lot of it had to do with the bakeries in our PUD ordinances. I've given y'all sort of a draft at this point. I'm not saying I won't do some additional drafting, but if I do, I will certainly give you a copy well before. Any anything goes out next month officially. But one of the things that I know we wanted to deal with was landscaping. And the whole what we found out in the previous legacy go around, and I'm not picking on legacy, but they're the only PUD we have. So what we found out when they went for their amendments is that we really didn't have a definition of landscape in our ordinance. So when we were talking about landscaping, landscape can include anything, from trees all the way down to grass. So I have suggested a few definitions in here along the lines of landscaping. That that sort of make it clear that we're not talking about grass. We're talking about trees, canopy trees, understory trees or shrubs. The four hundred foot square foot designation, I just wanted to let you know that actually comes from the Department of Environment. And the rationale behind that is that you need about a hundred and thirty feet planting space for a canopy tree for it to be survivable for the long haul, which is what we want. And then you have two two understory trees that are ninety square feet each, and then you have shrubs, which I think are thirty square feet each. But if you add all that together, it comes up to four hundred square feet. So that's the science behind that figure. I know Dan, I I know Danielle has a lot of experience with trees. We've talked with several people about trees I hear. But, you know, what I was thinking, just as an opening serve only, just consider this. Is that where we have the forty foot buffer, if they've got existing natural vegetation, and I didn't point out here, but I probably do, except for, you know. A syrup infrastructure such as sewer provision or water, good vision or things like that. We want that to stay there. But we want to require in the areas in that buffer that may not be treed. We want them to plant at a ratio of one canopy tree, two understories and three shrubs per four hundred square feet. Obviously, if they they have to tear something down and, you know, we want them to be able to replant at at a rate that is not only survivable. But will give us a good buffer at the end of twenty years' time.
You're saying beyond the natural buffer to meet square foot requirement? Is that what you're saying or?
Well, if we're requiring forty foot buffers.
Right.
Around a PUD, which we do. If we are to keep that and we do want those areas to be. Natural vegetation or we want the trees planted, we need to state what we want you to plant.
Either or, you mean, then? Either or, whether it's natural or whether it's planted. Is that what I mean?
Let's say, for example, you had an area that was just basically wide open. It was a field.
Right.
Before you start.
Right.
Got a forty foot buffer requirement, okay? It's easy to meet the forty foot buffer. Do you want any trees to be planted in that that field area?
Trees? Is that what you said? Trees? Do you want trees sometimes?
I'm sorry, trees.
Okay.
Yes. Trees and shrubs.
I got you. Okay.
I mean, you don't have to answer that now, but that's just the kind of questions that, you know, we should probably be thinking about, hasn't.
I guess what I was asking, if you have already a natural buffer, for instance.
Leave it.
Then 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 that's sufficient to meet that forty foot buffer. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, leave it.
As long as said buffer has trees and shrubbing.
Well, yeah, I mean, if there are gaps in the buffer, then then.
I'm just thinking about you coming down Victory Boulevard and you got a line, a whole line of trees and you got forty foot trees. That should be sufficient for a buffer, right?
I would agree with that. And 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 certainly mature trees are much more valuable than new trees because they're they're already basically mature.
Right, right.
And so they're sucking a lot more carbon dioxide and putting out, you know, all those beneficial things that trees do.
So the article or the section you want us to really take a look at is eight point four point five, the perimeter buffers and open spaces section.
Look at all of it. I've given you, we we have our PUD stuff in three articles, which is a bit confusing. And I'd hope to be able to whittle them down to two, but then I realized that eight dash eight point two. Kind of covers overarching language that applies to both the PUDW and the PUDMU. Well, so so I gave you that and also gave you eight point four, thinking that we probably needed to look at mixed use first. And then we can use that as a guide, a very instructive guide to rewriting the PUDW. So that was that was my thinking there. I didn't want to give you three different articles to shuffle around. I thought two was probably enough for now.
Here.
Yeah, okay.
Article eight point two is planned development districts generally. So that.
Yes.
That's everything that is applicable to every planned development district. Is that correct?
Whether it's a PUDW or or mixed use.
Regardless, if that that all of those requirements are 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 applicable for plan development.
That's true, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then when you get over to. Article eight point four.
Yeah.
Planned unit development, that's when you start.
That's that's for the mixed use.
Ailing down a specific.
Yes, we get more specific in the planned unit development MU, which talks about things that, I mean, legacies of PUD MU.
Right, okay, okay.
So and I don't know if we'll get any more of these, but I mean, given the end area that's taken. But, you know, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at this and and make sure it makes sense or if it doesn't, to make it make sense. But anyway, so take a look at it. I'll be working on it a little bit too, and I'll certainly give you. A copy of anything that I do, well in advance of when the agendas go out next month.
How will these modifications, Wally, affect the legacy project?
It will not affect the legacy project. The legacy is already in under the wire, so, you know, they are governed under our current regulations.
Is there only two PUDs, a water and a multiple mixed use?
That's the only two that are in the ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And and the the water one was the one that you're saying we don't have one now, but at least we have it defined in case someone builds a complex along the waterfront.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, I looked at most of them. It seems like just English changes, so I I I guess.
Lot of it is English changes, but there are some substantive things that we need to look at. And like I say, this is a rather superficial first blush at this point, so I'll be getting in a lot deeper into it as I will too. So, you know, we may uncover some other stuff. There's stuff in eight point two we may want to look at. I mean, I'm not saying we can't. I mean, we've been instructed to look at this and. All on the tape.
I've got another off the wall question here. We were sent these interests and ethics advisory council papers. Do you who'd I give that to? Okay, thank you.
I forgot mine. If I can just talk about the long range just a few minutes and then I I know we.
Yeah, do that.
Do with COVID use for too long, but. We're also looking at a revision of the subdivision zoning and site and ordinances. The subdivision ordinance is out of step with with state code. State code is bigger than we are, so we go by state code anyway. But, you know, it would behoove us to have an ordinance that that actually follow state code. I don't think that one's going to be as problematic. I think the zoning one is going to take us, we're almost gonna have to do that, I think. My thinking now is we're almost gonna have to do that the way we did the comprehensive plan, take it a little bit at a time. Make sure we're all on the same page before we move on to the next thing. And site plan ordinance, maybe a little bit of the same. The site plan ordinance, it's weird. There are some things codified in our ordinances that we haven't done in a long time. And for good reasons, but but we just we just need to clean up our codes. And I'll point that out to you as as we move along. But so that's sort of the long range after we get done with PUD, which will probably take a while to do. But that's that's sort of looking out over the the months and perhaps years. That's all I got.
I'd just like to ask, is the city doing any type of Zoom meetings or anything like that as COVID continues to escalate?
Well, when COVID was at its height, I know we didn't meet for a while. City council met, but they met by phone. I don't think we have the technology to do Zoom meetings.
I mean, it's pretty simple to Zoom.
Yeah, well, again, I can talk to, you know, our people and see what we can do. You know, it's unfortunate, but this COVID thing just continues to.
Well, that's what I was just wondering if it continues to. Fall for escalate, rather than not do. I'm trying to halt because.
Sure, we could do something by phone. I'm I'm less sure about that.
I'm kind of afraid of meeting, you know, being in my office in in Hampton, our our building is closed to the public. It's by appointment only, and all of our meetings, every meeting that I've been in is conducted through Zoom or something similar to Zoom. And I would like to see us at least investigate that in the event that, you know, I know we're looking at vaccines and things of that nature, but that's not going to turn it around. Immediately. And so if it were to continue to to spiral, I think that we do need some sort of fallback plan. Be able to do that.
Hopefully, we'll be got and see what we can do.
The city council at first, when everything was closed, did a Zoom. And the only people present, I believe, was the mayor and someone taking the notes, but they did all the voice.
I think it was just Randy and.
Right, it was just very few people that were here. The rest all were on 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 telephone calls and so forth. So they did it and they did it very well. I I watched a few of those and so it can be done, but hopefully. You know, we can. This is this is a nice arrangement.
We'll look into it.
Well, let me just ask this. If we did receive permission from the city manager's office to conduct these public meetings via Zoom and we were able to figure out how to do that, would all of you be willing to attend?
Totally.
I don't see any reason. I mean, we I Zoom with my family once every other week, so.
I do two or three meetings a day.
I think we've all got used to Zoom, yeah.
Probably the city already has. As far as I know, and I don't know all that much, there's two levels. One is free, which lasts you forty minutes, and the other one you pay fifteen or twenty dollars a year and you can go on for hours.
Yeah, it's very reasonable.
Yeah. The city may already have that.
They probably do.
I mean, it's a it's a a number and then a password.
We have some equipment to do meetings remotely from our conference room at city hall. It's just a matter of basically asking if the city manager's office and our IT staff are willing to support us on this.
Yeah, yeah, I I understand.
Definitely talk to them.
Yeah, good, absolutely.
And as long as they're recorded and and able to be played back later. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. for bringing that up. Anything else?
That's all I got, Dan?
Nope.
Any upcoming, anything upcoming other than ordinances or housekeeping?
Well, we're still trying, still trying to get phase one across the line.
Okay.
At it right now, with it, we're working on CRS reports, and I'm probably more involved in that than, than any of those.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you could even speak to this, but I was just wondering, is there, has there been any interest at all in the Farm Fresh Building of any description or anything?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of.
See, that's it in dark.
I think if there was interest in the Farm Fresh Building, I think the McDonald's Nursery probably would not be going forward to open up this spring, because like I say, there's some parking issues there, so.
So they'll be, they're moving from where they're at, and moving in front of the conference?
Well, yeah, they're, they're, they're slightly, yes, they are moving their operation from where they were behind where the CVS will be, they're going to move their operation closer to With Creek Road on the other side of that sort of entrance that goes next to Wendy's, it's just on the other side of that. So they will be moving, but they'll be taking up about twenty nine parking spaces, which is going to, with the shopping center, in a deficit, once that Farm Fresh Building is, is leased.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the other businesses in there, but I guess, Bill, take that up with the Browns.
Yeah, yeah, I suppose so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. I appreciate it.